Good evening. Thank you for joining us again. My son's been saying that this week, "We'll get ready," and he says, "Dad, what we doing?" So we're getting ready for church. He goes, "Church again?" I said, "Is that a problem?" He goes, "Nope." Alright, so let's all have church again and stand together. Take our songbooks to 366, Song 366. Maybe morning, maybe noon, maybe evening, but it will be soon. Jesus is coming again. 366, and we'll sing on the first. Marvelous message we bring, glorious carol we sing, Wonderful word of the King, Jesus is coming again. Coming again, coming again. Maybe morning, maybe noon, maybe evening, and maybe soon. Coming again, coming again. Oh, what a wonderful day it will be. Jesus is coming again. On the last standing before Him at last. Trial and trouble all past, grounds at His feet we will cast. Jesus is coming again, coming again, coming again. Maybe morning, maybe noon, maybe evening, and maybe soon. Coming again, coming again. Oh, what a wonderful day it will be. Jesus is coming again. Amen.
Amen. Good seeing, good to see you out tonight. Good to have Pastor Bossard with us. And you brought your daughter with you. That was good. I appreciate that. Brother, you want to open us in prayer, please?
As you're seated, take your songbooks to 361. 361. Some glad morning when this life is o'er, I'll fly away. Stanley, you feel like leading this with us, or are you good where you're at? It's an inside joke for a youth rally we went to one time, alright? And so, "I'll fly away," I won't put you through that again, Stanley. That's okay. 361, on the first verse. Ready? Some glad morning when this life is o'er, I'll fly away. To a home on God's celestial shore, I'll fly away. I'll fly away, oh glory, I'll fly away. In the morning when I die, hallelujah, by and by. I'll fly away on the last, just a few more weary days. And then, I'll fly away. To a land where joy shall never end, I'll fly away. I'll fly away, oh glory, I'll fly away. In the morning when I die, hallelujah, by and by. I'll fly away. On the chorus again. I'll fly away, oh glory, I'll fly away. In the morning when I die, hallelujah, by and by. I'll fly away. Amen. As again, my only announcement, register for our teen night tomorrow night. If you haven't done so, those of you that attend our church, let me know. And so, I can plan accordingly. Others outside of it, if you see online, or if you're inviting people, let them know to do so. As of right now, we have one person coming from outside, and from our church, I've got four. And so, if you have not told me, I'm only buying pizza for five. And the rest of you can watch as we enjoy our pizza, alright? And so, we'll go ahead, make sure you let me know, and so we can plan accordingly. And have a wonderful night, not just the preaching from seven to eight, but also the time of fellowship in the gym that follows. Thank you.
Alright. You know, I appreciate the folks, the fact that you folks take me seriously, but don't. I told you, give chocolate chip cookies and not offering. One person has given money so far. So I hope you got a lot of chocolate chip cookies, brother, because if not, we're both in trouble, alright? Now, I know what you folks do. You do this every time. You wait until Friday to put the money in, and then we have so much money, we can't even count it, okay? But, right now, Brother Hightower, actually, his wife gets it, he doesn't. She's gonna go home with $20. And so, I really think that, you know, put away the chocolate chips and get out some cash, okay? So let's, let's take care of that, because I have seen Brother Hightower eat. And $20 will not even take care of one meal for him, alright? So we need to do better than that, alright? And then also, with the couples retreat, I've been told that I've scared people away because I've said that we go to Grand Rapids, you'll probably get murdered. You probably won't get murdered, okay? So sign up, come to the couples retreat. You'll get mugged, but not murdered, okay? So keep that in mind, right? So, but we're looking forward to, what's that?
We could have omelets.
Yeah, they could have omelets. You can never tell, right? And so, but sign up for the different things out there at the desk, and make certain we know that you're coming to certain activities, alright? Again, don't forget the offering in its entirety. Even the chocolate chip cookies are gonna go to Brother Hightower and his wife. And the offering plates are all turned back, and avail yourselves to those if you will, alright? Lord Jesus has been good this week. Our hearts have been blessed, they have been convicted, they've been encouraged. And Father, I would ask that tonight, the same would be true. That we have spent time alone with you, asking you to do a work with each and every one of us individually. Father, I pray that we would be sensitive to what the Spirit of God has for us. Father, I pray that you would use Brother Hightower in a mighty way tonight. Bless the offering. Father, I know that Brother Hightower is a very gracious man. And Lord, as we are gracious to him, he will be gracious. And so, Lord, I pray that you would be honored and glorified in every area tonight. And we'll thank you for what you accomplished, for it's in your name we ask it. Amen.
Hey, something I got out of those announcements. Put away the cookie dough and get this man some real dough, alright? Amen. Wiggle worms, you guys are dismissed. And they go, they get the Shalkowskis tonight. That's always a fun, exciting time. And I was listening to Tim talks this afternoon. And Brother Woven, who does it with Captain COVID, he said there was one time he forgot to pick up his child from nursery. And he said his penitence for it was that he would be put on the schedule one time in the nursery. And they, they put him on it. He was in the nursery one time. He never forgot his child again. And so, maybe, maybe, parents, don't forget your children. You might get put on the schedule, alright? Make sure you pick up your children, conclusion of the service, and thank the workers for their labor of love as well. Let's stand together this time, enjoy a time of fellowship as the piano plays. Amen. As you find your places, stand with me. Take your songbooks to 569. 569. Redeemed, how I love to proclaim it. You know, the Psalms tell us, "Let the redeemed of the Lord say so." And so, as we sing it, remember, preach the truth. We are redeemed by the blood of the Lamb. 569, on the first. Redeemed, how I love to proclaim it. Redeemed by the blood of the Lamb. Redeemed through His infinite mercy. His child and forever I am redeemed, redeemed. Redeemed by the blood of the Lamb. His child and forever I am redeemed. And so happy in Jesus, no language my rapture can tell. I know that the light of His presence within me continually dwell. Redeemed, redeemed. Redeemed by the blood of the Lamb. His child and forever I am. On the last, I know I shall see in His beauty, The King in whose law I delight. Whom lovingly guardeth my footsteps, and giveth me songs in the night. Redeemed, redeemed. Redeemed by the blood of the Lamb. His child and forever I am. Amen.
Alright, we're gonna have word of prayer, and then a special, and then, brother, it's all yours, alright? Lord Jesus, again, we ask that you would meet with us. We'd ask that the Spirit of God and the Word of God would work together in tandem tonight, and bring about great changes in each and every one of our lives. May you be honored, may you be glorified and lifted up, and we'll give you the praise, for it's in your name we ask it. Amen.
When peace like a river attendeth my way, When sorrows like sea-billows roll. Whatever my lot, thou hast taught me to say. It is well, it is well with my soul. It is well.
It is well.
With my soul.
With my soul.
It is well, it is well with my soul. Though Satan should buffet, though trials should come. Let this blessed assurance control. That Christ has regarded my helpless estate, And has shed His own blood for my soul. It is well.
It is well.
With my soul.
With my soul.
It is well, it is well with my soul. My sin, oh the bliss of His glorious heart. My sin, not in part, but the whole. Is nailed to the cross, and I bear it no more. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, oh my soul. And Lord, haste the day when my faith shall be signed. The clouds be rolled back as I scroll. The drums shall resound, and the Lord shall descend even so. It is well with my soul. It is well.
It is well.
With my soul.
With my soul.
It is well, it is well with my soul. It is well, it is well with my soul.
Amen. Thank you for that. What a blessing. I, I think that's probably my favorite song. And my favorite verse is the third verse. My sin, oh the bliss of that glorious thought. My sin, not in part, but the whole, is nailed to the cross, and I bear it no more. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, oh my soul. What a wonderful God we serve. Amen. And thank you for coming. This is a great crowd for a Thursday night. How many of you, most every week, go to church on Thursday night? Yeah, I'm not surprised. That explains it. I don't often go to church on Thursday night, but I am very thankful y'all are here. Appreciate your faithfulness. It's encouragement to me. I'd rather preach to people than fabric, but more than that, it's encouragement to your pastor. So I'm thankful, and I'm sure he's thankful as well. Open your Bibles to the Gospel of Luke. The Gospel of Luke. How many times you ever think something was going to happen? When you find Luke, go to chapter two. How many times you ever think something was gonna happen, and it didn't happen? How many times have you expected something to take place, and it didn't take place? We have a rule with our church staff, because I've heard so many times, "Well, I thought this would happen." "Well, I, I, I expected this." I, I have a rule that we, we should never assume anything. You don't get what you expect, you get what you inspect. Never assume anything. In Luke chapter two, Joseph and Mary made a supposition, and they later regretted it. In the scriptures, in the Old Testament, the Bible tells the Jewish people that three times in a year, all the males who were able, 12 years old and above, all the males who were able, are supposed to go to Jerusalem for three specific feast days. Now, it's not unusual for the whole family to go. Make it a time of worship, and maybe even a little bit of a vacation time. In this particular instance, Joseph and Mary and Jesus have come to Jerusalem. And when all of the activities, all of the festivities are over, they started for home. Mary with the ladies, and can you imagine that group? Number one, if it's, if my wife was in the group, they would stop at every rest area along the way. Number two, I'm not gonna go, I, I'm in enough trouble today already. Anyway, I, I'll save it for another sermon. But, but anyway, Mary and the ladies have left in a group, and Joseph and some of the men have left in a group. Mary is thinking that Jesus is with Joseph, and Joseph is making the assumption, the supposition, that Jesus is with Mary. And so, they get a ways away and meet up together, and I'm sure Mary says, "Where's Jesus?" And he said, "Well, I thought he was with you." "He's not with me. He should be with you. You're the man of the house. You're his mother. I thought you had him. I don't have him. Where is he?" "He's in Jerusalem." Back they go. Let's read the story. Keep in mind about the supposition, about the, "I thought so." Luke chapter two, beginning in verse number 41. The Bible says, "Now, his parents went to Jerusalem every year at the feast of the Passover. And when he was 12 years old, they went up to Jerusalem after the custom of the feast. And when they had fulfilled the days, as they returned, the child Jesus carried behind in Jerusalem. Joseph and his mother knew not of it. But they, supposing him to have been in the company, went a day's journey. And they sought him among their kinfolk and acquaintance. And when they found him not, they turned back again to Jerusalem seeking him. And it came to pass that after three days..." Look up here just a second. Can you imagine losing your kid, and for three days you're searching? Wow. That is a time of high anxiety. A time of unhappiness in the home. After three days, the Bible says, in verse 46, "They found him in the temple, sitting in the midst of the doctors, both hearing them and asking them questions." Father, bless the time tonight. Lord, I, I, just stop and think today about the, the privilege it is to be able to meet together. Thank you for our country. Thank you for the blessings that are ours. Bless this service, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Very simple. This is a family who is doing right. They didn't have this problem of losing their child because of negligence. It wasn't a judgment of God on them. It was the simple result of two people assuming something that wasn't necessarily true. They were serving God. They'd come to Jerusalem. It's the time of the Passover. They obviously made a sacrifice. They were there because they're obeying God. My point is, sometimes bad things happen when you're doing right. Not, not every calamity, not every problem, not every trouble is the judgment of God. Sometimes it's just a part of life. And in this situation, it came about because this man assumed, and this woman assumed, and because they supposed, they had a problem. There was a problem. They're trying to serve God, but they have problems. Years ago, a young family came to our church. They had just gotten married and he had just gotten saved and he was on fire for the Lord. He was excited. And they, they joined the church and the day they joined the church, his name was Kevin, or I'm sorry, his, I forget, his name was Ken. His brother's name was Kevin. Ken says, "Will you go visit my brother? He lives with my parents. He's into drugs and he needs to get saved. Would you go visit him?" I said, "Yeah, I'll try to stop by on Thursday night." He said, "Good." Well, Thursday night, I knock on the door and Ken answers the door of his mom's house. He goes, "Come in." And I walked in and in the living room, sitting in kitchen chairs, he has Kevin sitting here facing this way and an empty chair sitting here and he says, "Sit down." So I need to sit, looking at his brother in the middle of the living room and preach to him. I said, "Kevin, you feel as awkward as I do about this?" He goes, "Yes." I said, "Let's go into the kitchen." I said, "The reason I'm here is I want to show you what the Bible says about how you can know for sure you're going to heaven." Ken jumps in, he goes, "You don't go to heaven if you don't get saved and you're not saved. You need to get saved." I said, "Ken, Ken, chill, man, chill, okay? I'll do the talking. You just sit over there and listen and pray." I said, "All right, the first thing you need to know is that you're a sinner." I said, "Kevin, have you ever sinned?" And before he could answer, Ken jumps in. He goes, "You know you have. You're a drug addict. You know how you and mom fight all the time. You know you're a sinner." I said, "Ken, Ken, do me a favor and go in the other room." He goes, "But I want to hear this." I said, "I don't want you to hear this." I said, "And once you get in the other room, don't say a word." So Ken goes in the other room, but he's standing right in the doorway and he's leaning in and he's listening. And I went through the whole plan of salvation. You could see, he wanted to just say something the whole time. And I hit down, I said, "Whoever shall call in the name of the Lord shall be saved." And I explained that to him. And I said, "Kevin, would you like to pray and ask God to save you?" And he hesitated. And he said, "Well, I'm not sure." Ken couldn't stand it any longer. He runs in, he grabs his brother. He says, "Kevin, you gotta get saved. If you get saved, you won't want to do drugs anymore. If you get saved, you'll never argue with mom. If you get saved, you'll never have another problem." I thought, "Man, I need Ken to talk to me." He was enthusiastic, he was zealous, but let me tell you, he was wrong. He was wrong. Saved people have troubles too. Saved people have medical issues. Saved people have financial issues. Sometimes saved people have family issues. It's just a part of life. But they have come to worship God. They've come to serve the Lord. And then after the day is about to end, they recognize, "He's not there. He's not there. They didn't leave him on purpose." It wasn't the sinfulness of one or the other. It was completely unexpected. The difficulty is, he's supposed and she's supposed. What's it mean to suppose? To suppose means to assume. For instance, if you're saved, hopefully you assume you're gonna keep doing right. Hopefully you assume that your kids are gonna do right. If you're saved, you assume that your marriage will be strong. If you're saved, you assume that your friends won't let you down. They'll be true to their word and therefore you, therefore you in your time of need. You assume that's the case, but not always the case. Not always the case. To suppose means to consider a possibility. For instance, you prayed, therefore you think you're gonna get an answer. Since you're doing right, you figure you're not gonna have problems like other people. Since you tithe and you're faithful in your giving, it just makes sense that you're not going to have money problems. You suppose that since you're doing right, the blessings are just gonna flow down everywhere, every day. But you know what? That doesn't always happen. We assume, we suppose. To suppose means to take it for granted. It's just an expectation. Your loved one gets sick and we pray and put them on the church prayer list and we ask those who may not go to our church to pray with us and we just take it for granted. They're gonna get well. Sometimes you take for granted that you're always gonna have a job. You imagine that your bus route is gonna grow and your Sunday school class or your children's church, you're always gonna enjoy it. Remember the first time when pastor asked you to teach a Sunday school class? Remember that? Brother, we, we need somebody to help out with the second grade boys. And in your mind, you're thinking, "Second grade boys. They're young. They'll, they'll respect me. They'll, they'll, they'll love the Bible." Man, this is a perfect idea. Yeah, let me, let me pray about it. And so you pray about it and you get more and more excited. And the first week, you get your materials and you go through the lesson and you've got it all figured. You might even have brought candy. You don't know any better. And, and you, and you come into class and it is chaos. Nobody's listening. Nobody's behaving. The only person that even looks at you is the one that says, "I gotta go to the bathroom." And at the end of the day, you're thinking, "What have I done?" But after a while, you kind of, kind of get the hang of it and you're thinking, you know, maybe I'm making a difference. Some parent comes up and says, "My son just loves your class." And you're thinking, "He doesn't even listen. He's not even there. He loves goofing around the whole time." But, but, but we suppose they're all gonna turn out to be preachers. But it doesn't always happen. We just take for granted that all these blessings are, they just, they need to happen because we're doing right. But you know, sometimes when we suppose we're wrong and we get disappointed and we may even find ourselves in a difficult situation. Joseph and Mary have lost their 12-year-old son. He's in Jerusalem, in a city that's overrun with travelers because of the Passover holiday and he's lost. How did he get lost? Wasn't his fault? It was because they supposed that he was with them. You know, the devil uses our suppositions. He convinces us to the place where I suppose it won't hurt to miss church every now and then. I mean, you know, if we're there on Sunday morning, I suppose it'd be okay to miss an occasional Sunday night. I mean, it is our only day to rest and to get ready to go to work. I suppose. One of the big uses of the devil, I'm convinced, to keep people from going to church is sports. Man, the Lions made the playoffs for the first time since Noah parked the ark. And everybody was all excited about the playoffs. And they were on Sunday evening and several of our people stayed home. I told them, I said, "Man, I hate to do this, but I'm praying they lose next week. I can't imagine what a Super Bowl would look like on a Sunday night." "What? But we suppose it'd be okay to miss." I was in a, I probably told you this story, but I like it. I was in a revival meeting and the pastor took us out to eat on Saturday before the meeting started. He said, "Our, our son, he'll be there tomorrow, but he won't be in any of the services the rest of the week. He's on a soccer team and they have practice." I said, "What?" I said, "He's gonna miss revival for soccer practice?" And the pastor got a little bit irritated and he goes, "Well, the team depends on him." I said, "Well, I guess it's a good thing God and the church don't." He wasn't really happy, but we went on with the revival and of course, his son didn't show up. Three or four years later, we were back in that church and we went out to eat on a Sunday night. And the pastor, he says, "I want you to pray for our son." He's not in church. He didn't care a thing about God. He's living with some girl that he's not married to. And it just breaks his mom and my heart. And I didn't say anything and I don't know that revival would make a difference. But I thought to myself, when you make things that don't matter a priority, things that do matter, we kind of push off to the side. The devil says, "It's okay." I suppose missing church every now and then is gonna be okay? The devil gets us to say, "You know, I suppose it'd be all right if I don't have my devotions every day, if I don't read my Bible every day." I mean, I've, I've read, a guy told me one time, "I read the whole Bible from generations to revolutions." Yeah. But we convince ourselves, "I'll be okay. I know the Bible. I've been in Sunday school all my life." It's not a matter of knowing it. It's a matter of letting God speak to you today. And every day when I, when I begin to read my Bible, I pray and say, "God, give me something that I can use today." I've read through my Bible numerous times, but every day I get something where God speaks to my heart because I'm looking for it. I'm asking for it. The devil says, "You don't need something every day. I suppose it'll be okay." Devil says, "Be all right if you, you know, you're not addicted or anything. You could go to a few spots on the internet." Everybody does it. I mean, it's just a part of the culture and the life nowadays. It won't hurt. Well, I suppose TikTok would be all right. I suppose it'd be all right to surf. How foolish can we possibly be? The devil uses our suppositions to get us to the place where we have great danger in our life. I suppose a little alcohol wouldn't hurt. You know, it's a big issue in churches nowadays, is social drinking okay? You know, Jesus drank at the wedding feast at Cana. I just want to go on record, my Savior is not a bartender. He didn't drink alcohol. If you, the Bible is against the drinking of alcohol. That's not nearly enough, amen. That's not nearly enough. The Bible is against the drinking of alcohol. Yeah, so, but the devil says it'd be all right. Just in moderation. You know, nobody got up one morning and said, "You know, I'm gonna try alcohol and I'll probably end up ruining my marriage and losing my kids and my life will be wrecked, but I'm gonna give it a try anybody." Nobody says that. They say, "I suppose it'll be all right. I suppose it'll be okay. I suppose it'll be safe." How in the world do we expect to have victory and to live a pure and clean life if we're trying to figure out how we can do wrong by what we suppose? You know, there are lots of people in the Bible who are close to God who did wrong because they supposed. David committed adultery. Noah, he was a righteous man. He found grace in the eyes of the Lord for 120 years, building ark, saved his family, got off the ark and got drunk. Talked last night about Peter, one of the apostles. But because of his pride, he denied the Lord three times. Those who loved Jesus the most, those who were the closest to our Savior, lost him because they supposed that he was with them. They supposed that he was among them. You know, the problems, the problems come about because we're not paying attention. We just get absorbed with other things. We're not paying attention. Joseph and Mary, they were doing good, but they were depending on somebody else to do what they needed to do. And when we're not paying attention, we don't notice the problem. Remember the story of Samson? He got his hair cut off and the Bible says that the Spirit of the Lord departed from him, but he got up not knowing. I'm gonna read you the verse. Judges 16, verse 20. She said, "The Philistines be upon thee, Samson." He awoke out of his sleep and he said, "I'll go out as another times before and shake myself, and he wist not that the Lord was departed from him." He didn't even know that he lost the blessing of God. He didn't even know that he wasn't going to be effective in his service for God because he gradually went downhill until he got to the place where his life was a mess. Why? Because he supposed it'd be okay. He just assumed that everything was gonna be all right. He just reached a place where it didn't affect him. So let me tell you how we can, how we can be careful and fix the thing. What did Joseph and Mary do? They stopped and they turned around. They didn't say, "He'll catch up." He knows, he knows our address. Somebody will bring him home. No, they went back to look for it. By the way, if you're not living for God, if you've stopped serving God, you know exactly when you stopped. You know what it was. You know, you know the temptation. You know the situation. You know the, the problem that caused you to turn from doing what you ought to do and what you normally do. And, and you know where you're at. They knew where they lost Jesus. He's in Jerusalem. And they turned around and they went back. Hey, be completely honest. They admitted, "We lost him. We lost him." So many times we make excuses. "Well, it's just a weakness I'm suffering with. Well, I'm just working through some issues." I read about a lady that had issues for 12 years and Jesus healed her immediately. She didn't have to work through them. No, be completely honest. Realize there's a problem. Maybe you're not as close to the Lord as you used to be. Maybe you're not as close to the Lord as you want to be. Maybe you've lost some joy along the way. Maybe you seem to be getting farther and farther and farther away from the Lord and you can't blame it on the fact, "Well, I'm getting older now." And you can't blame it on the fact, well, I'm getting older now. Well, my life's really busy now. Well, I've got a lot of things. No, 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 no. You lost Jesus, and you know where you did it. So realize there's a problem, and then refuse to go any further without fixing it. I mean, if, if, some people need to get saved. If you need to get saved, get saved. Some people need to wake up. Just alert yourself to the fact, I'm not doing what I ought to do, and I'm wanting to do it. Wake up! And then be courageous enough to do what you need to do. Go back to where you left him. Go back to where you started making those bad choices. Go back to where you began to neglect your duties. But go back to the place where you quit that ministry that, that you were involved with because you got involved with too many other things. And the thing that was least important to you was that ministry. Go back to that place and recognize, I've got to get things right. And then repent, come before God, and say, I have sinned. And when they found Jesus in the temple, you suppose they walked in and said, hey, why weren't you with us? No, they ran in and hugged him and said, we're so sorry. We're so sorry. We didn't mean to leave you. We didn't mean to go without you. We're so sorry. You come back to the Lord. That's, we'll have an invitation in a little bit. You come back and say, God, I'm so sorry. And ask him to forgive you, and ask him to make things right. Don't suppose it's going to get better on its own. Don't suppose that you'll be okay. It is determined, I have got to get right. And then resolve to just stay close to him. Resist temptation. Respond every time God speaks to your heart. Repent when necessary, and then resume immediately. They got Jesus, and they all went home together. Father, thank you tonight for this story. Thank you tonight, Lord, for the lessons we can learn. We, we, we don't mean to get a little cold. We don't mean to get away from you. Lord, it's not our intention to lose our zeal and our fire. But it happens. So I pray tonight, God, every one of us, to look at our life and see if we've moved on without Jesus. Help us to see if we've left him. Where it was that we left him. And make things right tonight. God bless every single person. Speak to our hearts. Your eyes are closed, and nobody's looking. How many tonight would say, God spoke to my heart in that message? Want you to pray for me. I, 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 I feel like maybe at least for a little bit, I've left the Lord, and I need to get back. Pray for me. God spoke to my heart. Would you raise your hand, hold it up high? I needed that message. Lord's dealing with me. God bless you. God bless you so many. Wonder tonight, how many would say, pray for me? I, 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 I want to make sure that I'm not guilty of those situations that we preached about tonight. Pray for me that I would stay faithful. Pray that I'd stay alert. Pray that I would be the, the kind of Christian who, when the temptations come, I can say no. And when the desire to slack off a little bit might arise, I can say no. And stay faithful to God. Pray for me. I, I want to keep doing right. Pray that I would. Raise your hand and hold it up high. Yeah, all over the room. Thank you. Let's stand, please. You can put your hands down. I'm going to pray, if God's dealt with your heart, you slip out and come. Don't hesitate. Just come. Thank you, God, for the honesty and the courage of those whose hands were raised. I pray that they would come tonight. Lord, I pray that decisions made would make a difference, not just tonight or this week, but for all eternity. And we'll thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. Come quickly if you need to come.
Just one more night, so don't forget. Tomorrow night, seven o'clock, all right? Okay, let me see. Brother Bob, will you just miss some prayer, please?